Good afternoon, everybody. I'm glad we could start this meeting on time and be very punctual. And with that, maybe we can ask Mr. Channing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put their right hand over their heart and repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, here we go. At this time, we're going to convene the open session. Call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to speak, oh gosh, individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to the City Clerk's staff prior to the item being heard by the City Council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And we're going to go right into communications from the public. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for communication from the public.
All right. Thank you, Sylvia. Number one, item number one, reports. It's Corona Municipal Code 17.63 Historic Resources: Revisions and Downtown Architectural Styles Standards for Residential Infill. Joanne Coletta, Planning and Development Director, will present this item. The floor is yours.
Thank you, and good afternoon. As you indicated, we're going to go over some recommendations to our Historic Resources Ordinance, as well as talk about a few other things. I just want to recap for the City Council. As you recall, we were back here in April of last year at a study session discussing possible changes to our Historic Resources Ordinance. And from that meeting, the recommendation to staff was to come up with a historic resource recognition that would be below the level of a landmark status. And the reason for doing that was to create an additional pathway for preservation of structures that may not necessarily meet the entire criteria listing for a landmark. So there really wanted to be an encouragement to get those that may be almost there, to get them on some kind of resource list. The next thing was to come back to the council and present to them responsibilities that would fall under the review of a Historic Preservation Board, should one be created. And finally, the discussion ended on presenting some architectural style standards for residential infill within the downtown specific plan. So the ask today is to get a recommendation and direction from the City Council on the three recommendations that I just spoke about, one being a structure of merit listing, the other one being a Historic Preservation Board, and the architectural style standards. And what we're really looking forward to today is having you tell staff if we should be moving on with the next steps. So with that, I'm going to first discuss recommendation number one. This is a proposal to have a structure of merit listing within our Historic Resources Ordinance. This would be brand-new, so this would be something that we would be adding. And really, this would be applicable to properties that would not meet the criteria of a landmark, but they have some elements that are worthy of preservation. So first and foremost, the criteria would be that it would have to already be on our heritage inventory. And then from there, we came up with additional requirements, with the help of the Historic Preservation Society, that the structure would need to at least meet one additional requirement. And one would be that the structure was once common to Corona's heritage, and maybe that it's now rare, or that the structure is connected to a business or use that was once common that is now rare, or there is a cultural resource within the structure that has been retained, and it may exhibit one or more of the criteria of a landmark listing, but it does not necessarily have all the listing criteria for a landmark. And finally, it can also yield information that may be important to Corona's history or prehistory. So the second recommendation is looking at a Historic Preservation Board. And when we talked about this at our study session, the council really wanted to know what responsibilities would fall under a Historic Preservation Board without creating additional layer of bureaucracy. So the proposal would be to take the items that are currently listed in our Historic Resources Ordinance, and those responsibilities that are delegated to the Planning Commission, and have the Historic Preservation Board be the body that would now take on that review. And like the Planning Commission, this board would be reacting to applications that are subject to discretionary review. So this list here, as well as on the next few slides, tells you what's already in our ordinance. And as you can see there, it tells you the current review body. So for example, number one, when you're talking about a listing or an expanded listing of a structure or a historic resource that is on the Corona Register, that currently goes to the Planning Commission and City Council. And the proposal would be to remove the Planning Commission and to have the Preservation Board now be the review body. And when we looked at all of this, the question was, does this really lengthen the city's review time? And in most cases, the answer is no. However, there are four instances that we have during a review process where the city's review time will increase, and I'll go over that with you. Another example to look at is the item listed on the bottom there when it comes to a major alteration to a historic structure that's already listed on the register. Right now, the Planning Commission has review over that, and again, that would be replaced by the Historic Preservation Board. So when you have a major alteration to a non-residential building, or to a mixed-use structure, or a multifamily structure that may be on the Corona Register and is within the downtown specific plan, the Planning Commission and the City Council are the review body. And this is going to be done through a precise plan modification. That's currently how the code is written. And since the Planning Commission is the review body for all precise plan applications, the proposal would be to have the Historic Preservation Board be the clearinghouse before a precise plan is submitted to the Planning Commission and then moved on to the City Council. And that would happen also if a major alteration is to a resource that's on the Corona Heritage Inventory. So in those two situations, that's where the review time would be lengthened. The other one would be when you're looking at the relocation or demolition of a landmark building that is either on our register and on either the state register or national register. Right now, the City Council is the only body that does that review. The proposal would be to have the Historic Preservation Board also do a pre-review of that before we would bring it to the City Council. And then in another instance where the time would be lengthened is when you're looking at an amendment to our general plan. And if it has to deal with anything that could affect a historic resource that is listed on our register or on our heritage inventory, because the Planning Commission is the review body of all general plan amendments, they need to stay involved in that. So the proposal would be to still have the Historic Preservation Board be a preview to that before an application is then moved on to the Planning Commission and the City Council. And then in all other situations that you've noticed on this list, the Planning Commission would just be replaced by the Historic Preservation Board. So to establish this board, we would need to establish a new ordinance within our municipal code. This would be a five-member board selected by the City Council, and they would all be subject to Brown Act meeting laws, just like your planning commission and your Parks and Rec Commission. They would need to be residents of the city, and they would need to have an intent or interest of knowledge of doing historic preservation. And the stipend would be the same as other commissions, which would be $50 per meeting. Again, we would only be meeting when we have an application that is brought forth that would require the Historic Preservation Review Board's review. So at this time, the ordinance would simply say they would at least need to meet once a year. However, we would need to meet as we have applications come forward to the city. The final recommendation had to deal with architectural style standards for residential infill in downtown. When we talked about this, we do have vacant properties within the downtown area that are currently being developed on for single-family residential. And there is a concern about what those properties are going to look like, especially given the character of the homes that are in this area. And you do have a lot of homes within this area that are historic resources. So what we did, we went through and looked at the guidelines we currently have in place for historic resources, and also the type of inventory that we currently have within this area. And if this council sees that there is an architectural style that is missing and would like us to look at that and bring it in, we are more than welcome to do that. There's also a caveat that can be written into the specific plan, that if there is an architectural style standard that is not specifically listed, but it is reminiscent of Corona's historic past, that it can be considered by the planning director. Right now, the style standards that we are looking at would be Craftsman, Mission and Spanish, Tudor, Colonial Ranch, and Victorian. And if you drive around, as most of you know, this is mostly what you see out there. And this would actually need to be adopted. In order for us to enforce it, we would need to get it into a regulation. So the idea would be to put it in the downtown specific plan. And this is just an example of how we would plan to do that. We would show some graphics, so there's no misunderstanding, and then we would identify common materials and common architectural features that would be related to that specific style. So the next steps that we would need to do is that we would then move forward to the Planning and Housing Commission, based on any direction we get today, because we would need to amend the Corona Municipal Code and the downtown specific plan. And then again, that would then follow through to the City Council. So again, the ask is that we're looking for your direction on these three recommendations, and if we should be moving on to the next steps. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Joanne. Sylvia, are there any speaker cards on this item?
Mayor, I do not have any speaker cards for the item.
Okay. Tony, questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so my first question is around item number one, the structure of merit listing. In lay terms, does that mean that if I had a home that was in the area, the designated area, that would I have a say yes or no about putting it on that structure of merit list?
Absolutely. Like all of our listings, they are initiated by the property owner. We don't go there and do that for you. So if you are, say you have a piece of property, and it may meet that criteria, you would apply for the application here at the city, and then we would process that.
So my concern is that I don't want something to be placed on a list unless, you know, the owner approves of it. Therefore, you know, making it, you know, more difficult for them to do something. So, you know, if I own a piece of property, and it's in the historical area, and it could be a property of historical interest, and I want to demo it and build something else, I don't want someone to tell me what to do, because it doesn't meet that style, or, you know, maybe tearing down a piece of history. If I own it, it's my piece of property. That's my concern. So I wanted to make sure that if it got on to that, or the only way that you can get on to the structure of merit is if you request that it is.
That is correct.
Okay. And my second concern, that I stated before, and I'll repeat it, because I still feel the same way, is this Historical Preservation Board. Having lived in other cities that have them, and understanding that they are very opinionated and cumbersome, again, with a piece of property that they don't own, I don't, I can't really agree with that board, or the concept of that board. I, you know, I'm not big on telling other people what to do with their property. And I don't want, you know, a non-elected board to have the ability to create, hang up, or strive for somebody that wants to do something with their property. That Preservation Board, to me, is, just sounds like a recipe for disaster. Those are my comments and questions.
Thanks, Tony. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you go back to that first slide of the changes of who would be responsible for what, I think it's one before this one, I think. Is it this one? This the first one? Okay, great. Looking at this list, and being very familiar with what's, has had to come to Planning Commission and the council for the last five years, are we talking, I think, if I have the number right in my head, five? Four? That have come in front of the council and the Planning Commission in the last five years?
Yeah, it's small.
Not a big number. Okay. And then for the, I mean, the whole reason to have a structure or merit listing is to provide an opportunity for people that own one of these properties to apply for, to get tax money back, to basically, that they would, there's money that would normally go to property tax, that they get taken off their property tax in order to work on their property. And right now, the system is only the ones that are, that are completely done and perfect are eligible for this, which is kind of counterintuitive if we want to get, you know, encourage people that own these homes to preserve them in a way that's, that's great for the city, and great for all of us, that we should have some skin in the game. So I appreciate that. And I didn't have any other questions, other than just to say thank you so much. This is great. I know we've taken a long time to get here, but I'm very pleased with, with where we are, and looking forward to seeing this go forward. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm curious, would the, the structure of merit listing allow for a homeowner to get tax incentives?
Yes. So it is up to the city on when they want to apply the tax incentive. So they can do it on a structure of merit. We did look into that. Every jurisdiction is different. And what happens if they have a savings in that, and they continue to improve upon the property, a structure of merit can be graduated to a landmark if they decide to do so.
And what is the benefit tax-wise of the landmark? How much is?
That is a maze of a question. There is a methodology and formula. We've been asked that, but that is something that is done through the assessor's office, and they do look at that. I could not correctly answer that.
It's about 40%. Forty to 60%, depending on the year.
Would we set the standard of what the tax break would be for a structure of merit?
The county sets the, the structure.
So the landmark would be, let's say hypothetically, 40%. What would the break be for the structure of merit? Would it also be 40%?
No, the structure, oh, sorry, Joanne.
We would have to look into that. I don't know how you would differentiate, but that's something we would have to look at in the contracts.
So you could get the, potentially the same tax break and not have your structure meet all of the same rigorous standards that the landmark requires. Is that what we're saying?
In my research on how it's applied in other jurisdictions, yes, it can't. It looked to me like it was a blanket. Now, we can research that and see if there's any difference that can be applied, but from what I know right now, it's blanket.
Then, then for me, that kind of, one second, that kind of changes the calculations, because I would love to support something that encourages continuous investment in a historical preservation of a building. But if you get the full benefit of a tax break at a structure of merit listing that you would at a landmark designation, then what is there to incentivize, other than altruistically just loving history and wanting your home to look amazing? Wes, did you have something to contribute to?
Yeah, I was just going to pipe in. The idea is that you, it's called the Mills Act contract. So then, we actually, the person that proposes their home to be on the, you know, be on the list and get this benefit, they have to show what they're going to do. So whether, you know, we look at the house, and it says, okay, it's a great example, except for it has the wrong, you know, windows or door, or whatever, and they say in the next this many years, we're going to make these improvements to the home over time. And it doesn't, it doesn't automatically, I mean, it goes for usually between five and 10 years, we can set the, set the number. It doesn't mean it just goes on forever. They have to show continuous improvement in order to get, to get the break. So...
But it does, but do we, how thorough is the, are those follow-ups? Like, once you get a Mills Act, do you have a follow-up every five years to make sure you're still?
No. And it's also a continuous renewal, unless we come in and say that we're no longer going to renew it because they have not kept the property, or they made alterations that were inconsistent. And we have done that. We've had to pull one property off the Mills Act because they were not doing what they were required to do. So we did not allow the renewal of the contract every year.
So it takes, it takes local government and someone being really astute and in tune to what that particular property is doing to revoke the tax break from someone getting that full blanket tax break at a, as a structure of merit listing. That seems like a lot. That seems like we're going to lose a few, right? It feels like we're probably going to give the tax break to some homeowners that something can come up, and they're just not going to continue the work that's needed to move on to the landmark designation. So that kind of changes my support for number one. I was in support of it if it was like a stepping stone to get you to, but it feels like it changes the incentives for the homeowner. As for recommendation number two, a Historic Preservation Board, I was wondering, I think it's not this first slide, but the next one, where it's like relocation or demolition. And so currently, it's just the City Council that reviews it. You know, I'd want that to go through another body before the City Council. So I don't know if that's part of, I've probably opened a can of worms. It's not what we're discussing today. But the fact that it's only the City Council that reviews that, I'd love to have that go through a Planning Commission. But neither here nor there, ultimately, I don't love the idea of weakening our Planning Commission and taking something that the planning, that an existing body can clearly do, only five or four in the last five years. It's not rocket science. We have good planning commissioners. They can understand these concepts. So I would not like to create a separate board to review these things. And then, the architectural style standards, that sounds good to me. I mean, I'm not an expert in these architectural styles, but this does look like a complete list. I do want to make sure that every time that we're considering this is the perspective of a homeowner who's, who lives in a historic home, who is not a historian themselves, or does not have interest in fully restoring their home, I don't want this to be burdensome for those homeowners who are not interested or don't have the financial means to restore a historic home. So, so long as we're not imposing undue standards or something that makes their life difficult, I'm on board with, with this policy direction. So, thank you.
Well, I'm generally supportive of all three recommendations. Jackie brought up a good point, though, with whether you're just making these improvements as presented in option one, whether you should get the full tax credit as someone who's got the historic home already. So it seems that that would be kind of silly. But I guess maybe I don't understand it enough to, to know the checks and balances along the way, and whether the Preservation Board, if it's established, would kind of be the oversight of that in some, in some way. I would think that they probably would want to be, since they're all a bunch of history geeks, right? But I don't know if that's true or not. So, but generally, I support all three.
Okay. I think it's, I'm going to give a shot at trying to change Jackie's mind. Tony's a lost cause. So when you, when you preserve historical houses, you end up preserving historical neighborhoods. And there's a value, it's cool to drive by one or two historical houses, but there's... so much to see in value when you see a historical neighborhood, right? So you really don't want to see the one-offs or Tony's modern house in there somewhere. It's best when you can, it's great to focus on specific houses, and there are geeks that love this stuff, me being one of them. But when you can see a whole neighborhood that's been preserved, that brings a lot of value to your city. So I just want to throw that out there. Also, ironically, talking about real estate, there's perks when your house is listed on lists of historical nature. So when you go to sell it, your house is worth more, because it's, it's historically registered, and, and if you're on the Mills Act or whatever list, that, that's a very good selling point for your house. Last, and what we haven't talked about, is our, our city has changed a lot, a lot. I, I don't know how the building department keeps up, because they are taking in so many building permits at any given time or plan submittals. And the problem is, is we have, you saw the map, there's just one little small section of the, of our city that's historical. The rest of it's modern buildings, right? Or whatever the style of the day. So when, when a housing project that's submitted in a historic neighborhood, the plan checkers aren't triggered right away to start looking for historical codes. They're, they're just, it's one of the broader plan checks. But if the system, if our plan check system could be fixed to where, hey, this is a historical house, this needs to go in front of a historical review board, then the plan checkers start thinking differently. And they start, start thinking with different directives. And I'll give you an example of this. I want to say two years ago, right, Wes? On Victoria Street, a guy came in. He, he bought a Chris Bowen special dirt lot, and decided to build a modern house. And he, he put it next to an 1892 Victorian house. And there's Craftsman houses around it, and there's farmhouse around it, and there's Tudor houses around it. And this house sticks out like a sore thumb, and the neighbors were just livid. They're still livid to this day. And it's embarrassing to drive by. It, it just, it's just bothersome. And, and it's because the plan check department didn't transition gears. They were just dialed into checking so many standards. There was nothing that triggered that this maybe should go before a historical review board. And if we put this historical review board, I think we'll eliminate those mistakes of the future. So I'm a, I'm all for it.
If I can, Mayor, I need to provide clarification. So on the list was not to take residential infill before a historical review board, it was to adopt the standards that you see. So when staff is plan checking, they know it has to meet one of these architectural styles that have been accepted by the council in order to be built within downtown, where you do not have that right now. So there's that ebb and flow of style, but that's why we specifically asked, do you want us to come back with an architectural style? Because if it's some modern, mid-century modern, like they're saying, but we're saying no, these are the styles that you can only have, then they're forced to go into this style, which is compatible with the neighborhood.
Totally agree. So I, are we four one or three two? Oh, sorry. Sylvia?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Okay. Rich?
While Rich makes his way up, I'll just mention that, that I, one of the reasons I brought this was because the Planning Commission did mention during one of these items that they didn't have the experience, and were hopeful that, that somebody would come and help. So hopefully, this will do that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are a couple of things that I think should be weighed along with the other comments that I've heard. And one of those relates to, there was a house here in Corona on Bell Street that had been awarded a Mills Act contract several years ago, and was, well, let's say, a new owner took over, and all of a sudden, code enforcement was out there looking at another house, and they said, what happened to those windows? The original windows? And the previous owner, before leaving, took out all the historic windows and put in sliders and all kinds of mixed architectural elements. So Sandra called me and said, Rich, I don't speak Spanish, but maybe you do? Could you talk to these people and see what they want to do? And so I went out there, and I spent two years working with them, trying to find someplace where they could replace the windows, because they were going to lose their tax break through the Mills Act because the house had been grossly repurposed, let's say. So anyway, we worked it out, we got a price that they could afford, and those Mills Act payments helped them to be able to do that. I was totally amazed at how much time it took to be with them and get good pricing. The first price for the 19 windows in the house was $42,000. Their total income was $49,000 a year. So they didn't qualify for any of the reimbursement kinds of things that the city offers or the county. So we kept looking at it for six months, and finally found that we could get the same number of windows for $15,000. And if you drive by that house now, it looks nice. It's not vinyl windows. It's just the way it was before. It's nicer, because they've spent the money that they were deferred on their taxes on restoring the house, basically. So I just wanted to throw that wrinkle in there. Another thing is, we, as an organization, CHPS, rely on the documents that the city maintains, the register, the inventory, things in, in describing houses, and helping people work on significant statements for their homes that would like be landmarked or other. And I don't know how to describe this. It's just very difficult to come up with the right information. We're having a vintage home tour that in May, and we've got three homes that have never been on anything before. They're not listed on the Mills Act or the landmark. And I'm thinking to myself, how are we going to present these things? So I called Danielle over at the library, and I said, I know the Heritage Room is closed. This is my problem. And I explained it to her, and she said, Rich, the city is a cosponsor of your event. Let me see what I can find and do for you. Basically, I need to look at three files and three or four books. And the challenge is, where were those files put, and where were the books put, when everything was moved out of the Heritage Room? So that's just another thing. But one of the things that I ran across as a, as a Historic Preservation guy is trying to find out information on the register or on the inventory, five or six years ago now, 2017. I came up to the counter, and I said, can I get a copy of the current register? And I got an embarrassed look, and it hasn't been updated. And I said, what do you mean it hasn't been updated? There's five people at the counter, employees. And I said, well, why don't you ask Sandra or Joanne if I can volunteer to update it for you? I deal with it all the time. I'm sure I can do it in less than a week, but bring it up to speed. And Joanne approved, and I came in the next Monday, and they said, Rich, here's your desk, and here's a stack of files two feet high on the desk. Can you take care of this? And I said, yeah, I won't be working eight hours a day, but I can spend three hours a day. By Friday, I had the whole thing put together, but that's because I'm familiar with it. And that's what, the Planning Commission isn't familiar with all of those things all the time. Neither is the staff. But we in the Historic Preservation area, we're familiar with a little of that stuff, and things can go quicker, just for that, for your information. Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Rich. Jacob, do you need any direction? You're good, you're cool.
I believe the direction is to proceed as proposed, the recommendations. That's what I caught, anyway.
Three, two. It's, I didn't sway Jackie. And with that, the next meeting is the City Council meeting at 6:30 PM. This meeting's adjourned.